So we can go over to number three for agenda review. Sure.
Add to. Small print. Uh, let's do.
Yes.
Yeah, let's do C.
C?
Yeah.
Anyone else? All right. Um, number four, minutes of the previous meetings, we have meeting minutes of August 5th and August 19th.
Roof. Second.
Any edits or comments on the? Nope. All those in favor approving those meeting minutes of the 5th and the 19th, say aye.
Aye.
Huh? She said aye too.
Oh, the 20th.
Oh, the 19th. Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Good catch. Thank you, Sandy. All right, number five. Uh, the first thing we have is principals report. Am I, do you want me to, I know they're in the drive now, but do you want me to go around?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, we will start with Mr. Hamilton.
Well, good evening, everybody. Um, my report, I apologize, is very similar to our August report. Um, no major updates. Um, we started kicking things off with kids last Thursday at our freshman orientation program. We had a great turnout for that. Uh, we didn't record attendance, but I would estimate that the vast majority of freshmen were with us last Thursday. Uh, we gathered in the auditorium, we introduced on all staff members, um, who joined us. So whether they were a school counselor, um, school club advisor, um, coach. They took a moment to introduce themselves and then students were introduced to advisors and they went with their advisors to their advisor locations. Did some Q and A there, some general information, and then they did a walk through their schedule just to get a general understanding of the, of the building and where they were going, blocks one through eight. That was really the tail end of our teacher workshop days last week. So what I provided for you in my report is just a kind of bulleted list of what those four teacher workshop days look like and the topics that we covered. Um, we opened both Monday and Tuesday with some team building activities that were centered around goals and setting goals within departments, but also setting personal goals that were connected to the vision of the graduate. Um, we reviewed logistic, the logistics, uh, policies and procedures were a big part of Tuesday and Thursday. Um, those topics included bullying, civil rights, frontline, and then Thursday morning, um, we started with bloodborne pathogens and review emergency management procedures. So, um, that's just a quick synopsis of what those four days look like with teachers. You know, I would also, you know, want to say that people came back really enthused, very energetic, um, very welcoming. You know, I thought the, the tone of the four days was great. And I would say the same about today, you know, the first day of school, um, very upbeat, very positive. You know, for a first day of school, things went really efficiently. Um, and I've really appreciated, uh, both last week and this week, the folks that have taken the time to come up and introduce themselves. It may be a second time that we're meeting, um, but I appreciate folks are coming up, saying hello, you know, talking about a connection that they might have. Um, given, you know, their knowledge that I'm in Epsom or I previously worked in the Pittsfield School District. So, and that goes for students too. You know, I probably had, you know, maybe two dozen kids come up and, and share comments like that. So, you know, I just want to say publicly, thank you to all of those kids, those staff members, um, over the past two weeks for making me feel so welcomed. And, you know, I hope that was a really reciprocal, um, in my first two weeks with, with folks back. It's, it's really been enjoyable and nice to see people back in the building. And I want to close by just giving you a quick rundown of what the next, uh, four to five weeks look like. Um, we've got class meetings coming up, um, this Friday, running through next week to talk about school policy and cell phones. Want to talk about that? Um. Um, yeah, I suppose I can't pass the mic without telling you how it went today, day one with cell phones. So, um, we had talking points that were part of advisory today. There were eight talking points, um, that advisors had to share with students. Uh, but I'll tell you from the first bell at 7:30, being a part of the CRTC conversations, um, during the first block, being in open campus during block one, uh, going through the three lunch blocks today, talking with folks about how things are going. With the exception of one issue of non-compliance, there were very few reminders that were needed. And 99% of students, you know, without, without reminder, um, without warning, um, you know, went through their day, uh, today with, with no issues. So, um, you know, really, I think it's, you know, kudos to them, kudos to their families that took time to talk through with them, you know, what this policy looks like, um, how they need to, um, change the way, um, that they're interacting with folks throughout the day. Um, I was just telling Josh a funny story, you know, a, a young man sat down, kind of looked across the table at one of his friends during open campus today and said, I don't know what to do, but I got a deck of cards in my bag. And, uh, that's, that's how they passed the time during, uh, during their open campus block today. And I think that, you know, maybe speaks to what the intent of this was, you know, kind of that face-to-face contact, that conversational tone that, um, folks wanted us to get back to. And, you know, today, given it's one out of 180, went, went really well. So I wanted to, to share that with you and that'll be a part of our upcoming conversations at class meetings, you know, this week and next week as well. Um, you, you know, open house is next Wednesday, school pictures is the following, uh, Friday. Um, same day as our summer reading assessment and the quarter one checkpoint's going to be here before we know it in the beginning of October. Any questions?
When, um, sorry, when you said not cellphone non-compliance, that, does that mean someone had their phone out and you had to tell them to put away, or they had their phone out and they wouldn't put it away?
One student had some choice words for an adult who asked him to put his phone away.
Very good.
That was the only incident, um, today.
Good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Now we'll do TRS.
Uh, in, you know, very similar, um, you know, welcome back staff last week, students this week. Um, I think the first day of school is still hands down my favorite day of the whole school year. Um, everybody's just excited and can kind of, you know, feel the energy in the building. Um, so it's a really great feeling, um, if you ever do want to come visit TRS, come on the first day of school, it's pretty amazing. Um, kind of the, the biggest part for us this year is we have 12 new staff members. Um, so that brings, you know, all kinds of stuff with it, um, especially, you know, supporting those staff, especially the ones that are, you know, brand new. Um, you know, this is their first, um, education position. Um, but, you know, the TRS staff has, has come together amazingly to support, um, all 12 of those folks. Um, so it's been really nice to see, um, the community building and the community support, um, around the building. Um, so welcome to all of our new staff, there's quite the list there. Um, we do start our school year with four, um, staff days. Um, so, you know, very similar to what, um, Derek was saying, uh, we do a lot of required trainings, um, and then a lot of stuff on top of that. Um, we really try hard to, um, kind of, you know, outsource for a lot of our, um, training. So we did have DCYF come in, um, and train our staff on mandated reporting, um, that is a, a state requirement, um, for everybody in New Hampshire, but more specifically, um, those that work with children. Um, so it's really nice to have them come in and you hear it, you know, straight from the source. They walk us through what it means to make it a report, you know, what kind of information you need. Um, so we love to have DCYF come and do that, um, so we thank DCYF for that. Um, Officer Weber, um, provides us with our required suicide prevention training. Um, he is trained through New Hampshire Connect, um, so he has this whole presentation that he does, um, to fill that, um, requirement as well. So thank you to Officer Weber. Um, and then Andra Hall, um, came in to do, um, several components, bullying, civil rights, Title IX, special education, five, four plans. Um, she does a whole presentation as well, um, so another huge thank you to Andra. Um, we also hold our fifth grade orientation, our Panther Prep Day, um, during those four days. Um, and, you know, that's, you know, an exciting time as well, um, so that went smoothly. Um, the fifth graders seem to have, you know, a great time and a learning the ropes and, um, spending some more time with their teachers before all the other students get there. Um, pals, um, for a number of years and they did it again this year, they provided a breakfast for TRS staff, um, on Wednesday, the 27th. Um, they treat us like gold, um, and we appreciate them very much and all they do for us. And then just some, some upcoming stuff, um, so soccer and cross country. So I think soccer actually started today with tryouts, um, and cross country is starting this week too. Um, so we'll be getting into game season, meet season very quickly. Um, so please come, you know, check out a, a home game, um, or a home meet. Uh, we love to see, uh, the community there to support our kiddos. Um, open house is on the 18th, um, and picture day is also the 18th. And then just a plug for a fundraiser during open house, we always sell, um, mums, fall mums, um, for our Washington DC trip. Um, so if you're looking for some mums to put on your front steps, come on down to TRS on the 18th.
Mums, I had to write it down.
I'm going to write that down too.
Yeah. All right, and now Hill School, Ms. Carrie.
Um, I feel like they've echoed, or I would echo a lot of what they said. Um, last week was same thing, uh, all the trainings that they talked about, we do. We focus with staff on our school-wide goals, so we have school-wide goals that we, uh, talk about. And then our training specifically addresses what we need to support those school-wide goals. Um, and then teams do a lot of, uh, planning with our coaches or with myself as far, and Tammy, and we really spend a lot of time trying to give everyone as much time as possible to get themselves prepared, ready in the classroom, and then collaborating in different teams. Um, so again, we had this, all the same trainings that Katie just spoke about. Um, on Thursday, we did our kindergarten, kindergarten all aboard, which we typically do today. Um, but we did that on Thursday and that, we really, really liked it. It was awesome because all the staff was available. So like typically, our unified arts teachers are teaching when we do kindergarten all aboard, they got to actually be there this year. So it really was just, I mean, so many people showed up in the, so many, uh, staff members showed up to just be there. Um, so we really enjoyed that and we want to keep doing it. On the same day, we do the meet and greet and then we had our first through fourth grade in, in the afternoon. Um, so it went really smooth. Also, as far as the busing goes, it's significantly easier because they're not dropping off all of Hill School, all of Three Rivers, then going back out and getting the kinders. So overall, it just went much more smoothly this year. Plus if families only had to take one day to do this versus if they had to, you know, other kiddos in other grades Thursday and then again today. Um, and so usually with that, we just, since I've been there, kindergartens never started on the first day. We've always had all aboard, but it went smooth. They walked in, like they own the place, they said, yep, we know where we're going and off they went. We were like, you've got this. Um, and it kept going through the rest of the day. So it was great. Um, dismissal, we were done at our normal time. Um, so everything went really well with that. Um, overall, the first day was, again, it was smooth. It was great to have everybody in the building. Um, the kids were excited, the staff were excited. I just am going to plug, um, our kindergarten teachers and their immense appreciation for their kindergarten general ed paraprofessionals today. It's just a huge difference, I, you know, just what the level of support you're able to provide those kiddos, it's like night and day. It was just amazing to be able to get back to that. So we're thankful to everybody who kind of helps support that. Um, and then I just, again, huge shout out to facilities, they got our building up and running, uh, for the week. We definitely pushed them to help us out and they're very kind in moving us all over the place, so thank you for that. Just, um, we are not doing an open house this year because we do our meet and greet. It was the same, it's the same thing back to back. We're going to save it and do our curriculum night again in January, so just want to remind everybody of that. Um, and then next week, we're holding what we call safety week. So each day we do, we review one of our drills and we practice it. Um, we'll do that Tuesday through Friday. Our armed assailant drills we'll do as a staff on October, on October PD day, as well as a reunification drill. So that will save as a, because that can be done as a conversation. It doesn't have to be an active drill with the kids. So we choose to do it as a conversation and teach them the other appropriate safety procedures for lockdowns and things like that outside of the armed assailant drill. Um, so I think those are, and then we do have picture day coming up on the 17th as well. So I think that's pretty much it for Hill School.
Any questions? Anybody? Thank you. Yeah? I think it is, because, um, I was trying to get into Alma on PA grounds and I could not.
To the.
Yeah, I think it's locked, yeah, is it locked down? No. I was actually thinking the same thing, because at pickup, at pickup, I was trying to go on my phone because the pair was like, what class is she at? I couldn't get into my Alma to say where she was. I said, you're going to have to go to the app and ask where she is. Because, and it was, it, huh? You, you're a staff person, so your thing is probably, we are not. Even though we have an SAU email, it's probably not. Thank you. We'll fix it. Josh, would you like to give facilities report?
Yes, uh, good evening. As I said last month, our, our facilities are in great shape. Uh, they're glowing, they were ready for day number one. Um, and that's mostly due to the crew we have, uh, the hard work they put in, uh, the attitude. They come to work with a positive attitude every day and they just take tremendous pride. Um, and on days like today, day number one in all the buildings, it truly shows. So very fortunate to have the best crew. Um, again, I can't pump them enough, they just, they're fantastic. So great day number one on that and everything was ready. Um, next, we have our fire suppression systems at Pembroke Academy and Three Rivers received their annual inspection. Um, all is well with those. Our fire panels, our fire extinguishers and our kitchen hoods received their annual inspection. At Pembroke Academy, Three Rivers and Pembroke Hill School, all is well with those. Uh, the athletic fields have all been prepped and are ready for the fall season. Uh, today was actually day number one up there for games. Uh, unfortunately, the rain on Friday canceled some things. So I believe today was the first true game day up there and it was good to see the parking lot full. People and fans up on those fields and most importantly, the student athletes on those fields. So fields look great. Um, next, we, we were able to finish some new countertops at Three Rivers, the upper bathroom. Um, the upper bathrooms received two new countertops in each, the, both the boys and the girls. And at Pembroke Academy, the eight sets of the bigger student bathrooms all received new countertops as well. Those were ready for day number one, which was great. Uh, next up, we finished off some new cabinets and some new faucet cabinets in four classrooms at Pembroke Hill School. Um, I'd say this is a small project in our world, but this project was much bigger than just a small project. It will have a lasting impact in those rooms that they were completed in, which is in the oldest part of the building. Um, I think the staff were extremely happy with it. I think they're gonna, those cabinets are going to support those staff and students through the school years for years to come and really look forward to continuing this project, uh, down the road. Then lastly, on the report, um, last month I spoke about the PA gym being replaced. Um, and I just want to speak about the value of having a great relationship with some of our vendors. Uh, while our roofers were up replacing the Pembroke Academy gym roof, they noticed on the library roof here at PA and the Haley building here at PA, both those roofs were completed maybe two, three, four years ago. Um, they noticed the seams were failing, which had been an issue with the year in the product. Um, and they went out of their way to make sure that was warranty work. They came, they reseamed both roofs, which was about a three-day job. Um, all was covered and very fortunate that they found it before anything major happened. Um, took care of it and, and really got us in before day number one. Uh, so, uh, don't speak about the vendors often, but sometimes we just got to be very thankful that, you know, we have good vendors. We have vendors that care, they take care of us. And as I always say, uh, vendors like, like Melanson's, they answer our phone at midnight when we're calling and that's very important. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions at all? Thank you very much. Okay, sorry.
So, um, so the roof is going on the greenhouse now, or the panels are being replaced? I saw it walking in.
Yes.
So how long will that take?
So the plan is, um, I would never say an end date, but the plan is the end of this week. My true guess is that we'll, it'll be finished by the end of next week at, at the pace they're going. There's two guys on the job, they're working extremely hard and, um, they're getting so much done in a day. I just think typical contractor work.
Yeah.
They say today, but the reality of it is, is it will be tomorrow. So my guess is by the end of next week.
Right.
It looks fantastic, by the way. I said to plug it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Student report, we don't have yet, not yet. Yeah. Uh, exec board report, Carrie?
Um, we did have a uh, we did have a brief meeting at the 20, 21st, I think it was, um, just to, uh, approve, uh, module that we needed for the payroll system. Uh, so, and then we did have a little bit of other discussion, but the, uh, we're getting into the meat of things on, uh, next week. September 10th is our first meeting. We'll start, um, discussing budget items and then we will have another meeting on the 24th. So we have two, two important, uh, SAU budget meetings coming up in the near future. And it is always open to the public.
Thank you.
Exec board meeting. Yeah, okay.
Carrie, just try to remind me when you get close, like a couple of weeks before, so I can take the night off. Okay. Jean, CIP update?
Included CIP two weeks. I don't know, it's all running together, two weeks ago. Um, did our rankings for all the town departments and their needs. Um, so I think, did you confirm with Jerry for the ninth, or not, the, the, whatever, the seventh?
Uh, the first meeting in October.
Yeah, sixth or seventh, right? Can't remember, I have to look at my email. Um, so.
Should be the seventh.
Okay, so the seventh, um, Jerry Fleury will be in to give his CI report, CIP report to all of us. Um, and then budget starts on October 9th. That's about where we are right now.
Nate, thank you. Number six, consent agenda, no? Number seven, culture and climate survey.
Yeah, so I actually don't need you to do anything with it tonight. I just wanted to make sure that you had that ahead of your second meeting for the month. Um, the results came out over the summer on the culture and climate survey that was done in the spring. And our curriculum coordinator, Amy, put it into a nice package for everyone to see. So it's easy to digest, you can review the information. That way you all have it ahead of time, so you can formulate questions. Um, it can help guide some of the discussions during our work sessions. Uh, but I want to make sure you had that and if I could answer any questions, I will try my best.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions right now or?
Is there something you would like us to focus on more specifically as we start to? Something that kind of comes out to me.
Not yet, I'm still going through it as well, because I have just got this not too long ago. Um, so I'm still digging through it and making my own notes and kind of guiding where, um, work could be. But also we've got, like to Katie's point, 12 new staff members. So it's, you know, it's a snapshot in time and this spring may be a very different result for even TRS, for example. Um, so, but it'll be what I'm hoping for at the end of this year. We'll have three consecutive years of data, so you'll have a good data sample to look at and see if there's any trends we start to notice. Uh, then it will be easier to kind of pick the areas of focus that we might need to really kind of wrap our heads around.
Is there, this is a materialist question, but is there something about the timing of when we, when we watch the survey? Like are we deliberately doing it in like this time in the spring or?
I don't know that I. Yes.
Wondering, you know.
So the rationale for doing it when we do it is that, um, you've given new teachers a chance to get to know the culture and climate of their building and not doing it in the fall. It, it just was too early for new staff that might be coming in. We wanted to be able to give people a chance to get through the year. Um, we spent several, you know, opportunities talking about when to do it and try to find that sweet spot of when there's not too many surveys going on, when there's not too many tests going on for kids and teachers are stressed about all the exams that kids have to do in between vacations and the holidays and PD. So it really, it took several opportunities to find kind of the sweet spot for that survey. So it's, it's not perfect, but having it in the spring was intentional. Yeah.
Thank you. And we're going to dive into it a little bit at the work meeting, second meeting.
I think that would make sense, yeah.
Okay.
This way you guys have it.
Yes.
And you can, you have a couple of weeks to review it.
Thank you. Number eight, we have superintendent updates.
Um, so most of my update this week is really around policies. So I was able to go through, you guys had requested me to go through and look at, see how many old policies we still have from like the 1990s. Uh, there's only a couple that I could find that we still have to get on to update from the 90s. There are a lot more from the early 2000s, so not much better than the 90s. But I have gone through and started triaging some of our policies that would make sense for us to get to first. And most of them are from the early 2000s or the ones you'll see today are ones that were legally required that I didn't see that we had. So I wanted to make sure that those were the first priority, more than anything was getting the legally required policies. Um, and Melanie, you had mentioned that we might actually have gone over some of these in the spring, but I didn't see them in the drive.
Yep.
So if we did go over them, I want to make sure that we find wherever those are and get those in the drive. Uh, because the ones, uh, today are ones that are legally required. We don't have to approve them today, but we need to get them done ASAP. So that was, you know, I spent a good amount of time doing that. Um, I got around to meet all the staff in the new buildings. It's exciting and kind of feel the energy of getting school started. I'm looking forward to getting out, um, and hopping in for visits this week. So I will have a more of an update the next time, I'm sure.
Great, thank you. And audit update.
Yes, so we are making good progress with, uh, the audit update. Amber is going to have an official, um, audit update for the exec board, so that will be coming out. But I want to give you guys a heads up that that will be coming out. I believe everybody Pembroke is just about caught up with their audits. We're still waiting a lot of the final reports from the auditing company. So the field work is, uh, nearly done and caught up. It's the actual report writing from the auditors that we're waiting on those final reports for. So she will have a formal report that goes out from exec board and then we can bring that back at the next meeting.
And then Willie, um, I know it was something that we requested last year. Okay, good. I just can't hear myself. Um, I know we did request last year that the auditors come in and present to the board. Um, I would like to follow up with that and make sure that that is something that we're doing on a yearly basis so that we can. so that we can keep on track.
Uh, do you want them to come to the Pembroke Board or Exec Board? What did you have last year?
We haven't. We would like to have them come to the Pembroke Board.
Oh, great. Yeah, I can
If we could have, and I, and I can't speak for the other towns, but it probably would be mindful to get that on everybody's agenda.
Yeah, I can do that. Okay.
I was just gonna tag along with Carrie there. I think, you know, I've been on here the longest and I didn't know anything about audits. So I think if we consistently have a presentation every single year, it will, you know, just becoming, you know, part of a meeting at some point in time, whether it's October, whether it's March, whatever the case may be. And it's always on the schedule and it doesn't fall through the cracks like it did before. So
It probably makes sense to do it in the fall because that's when you're in the budget season anyway. So I think that makes sense. And then one of the policies on here tonight, policy DIE, is actually in regards to having an annual practice around audits. So
Great, thank you. We'll move on to number nine, policies.
Right. I know.
So, but it's fine.
It's okay.
Um, my first question, I did get into the drive because I'm on hot spot, but there are two versions of the meeting minutes one in the drive. And I just want to clarify which one is
Sure. Let me take a look here. The meeting minutes one you said?
Yeah, it's at the very bottom.
Oh, one of those should have a very recent date because we did it before. Is this about taking non-archiving?
One of them is a little bigger than the others of file.
Oh, I know what it is.
Stuff in there.
So what it is, is the one that has the perens one, perens one. That is Pembroke's copy of the B E D G meeting minutes policy that's already in place. And then the other one is the New Hampshire School Board Association example policy.
Okay.
And they both were put in there, so you had one to reference.
So the second one is the one we've already sort of made some light edits to. Is that, am I getting that right?
That would be my guess, yeah. Because that's your policy that's currently in place.
Okay.
Uh, it was, looks like it was 2025, but then
Because I do remember looking at this earlier.
We did.
Yeah. So I think it looks like New Hampshire School Board Association made some revisions in July. So there's probably language that came through that needed to be updated, would be my guess.
That was, okay.
Oops, sorry. Sorry.
If you look at the bottom and you find July 2025, it has to do because of passage of certain bills and they're just changing very minor things.
What I can do, because now that I see how confusing that is, when they go in, I will make sure that they have better labels going in as documents.
So what we used to have was, you know how there was a policy folder? Then there used to be, when you go into the policy folder, there used to be one that said NHSBA and then one that said Pembroke. And we would dump the Pembroke ones in so that you could split screen and pull them both up together.
I can do that.
Yeah, and I feel like we would need to read these two as almost a concordance because we, we adopt, we had, we adapted and adopted and then they changed like right after that. It's almost difficult to see.
Yep, right.
Do their changes even apply to our, because what they're suggesting is, is to what their own standard was, not to what we Right, am I getting that right?
Correct. Correct. So normally what Carrie and I would do would pull up our policy, if it was relatively recent, which it was, January. And then you pull up theirs and find what they did in July. And then in the highlighted, it tells you, we changed this to RSA blah, 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 based on HB this. And that's all they changed. So then all we have to do is change those in ours. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Instead of reworking the whole wheel. But that's what we used to do. We had two folders, sorry, Carrie. Yeah, the non-discrimination policy. And I know we're on first reading, but we would definitely need to the last page, which has Jess's Assistant Superintendent.
Yeah, that's the only reason the AC and ACR are on there.
Okay.
And those you can just do tonight. And that's the only change that needs to happen is the name needs to be updated. And those policies, we're required to list the name, not just the position. So anytime there's a change, it can be a little frustrating because you have to update the name and right after that happens.
Okay. So those are easy.
Yeah, AC and ACR are just a name change.
And I know you guys are doing, I did look at all these policies today. The other one that's really easy is the GBCD dash RG that we did over and over and over. That probably looks familiar to you. The only thing they did, if you go in and look at it, is they changed the, it used to say AP on the end and now it's RG. They just laborly changed it. So we don't need to rework that one. You don't want to. It's 2025.
And Jessica, if we're following your earlier comment, the ones that you've put in here for first read are the ones that they do, they do carry importance because of the, you know, legislative change or some kind of policy change of the state.
Some, yes. Some of these, I went back and were, they were changes that were made last year. And I think the policy either, it was covered and just didn't get put into the drive, but I didn't see it in there. So I noted that we didn't have a policy. But some of them were from, I would say actually the majority were not from recent legal changes. They were from over the last like year or two.
Fair enough.
But all the ones I did tonight are just ones that I noticed we didn't have that were required by law and the AC policies for the name change.
Okay. So I don't know what, what people's preferences here. So I mean, I feel like the, the meeting minutes one, we need to sort of side it so we can kind of see it differently. That feels right. I don't know if we want to hit some of the easier ones of first read and about now.
Approving?
Yeah.
So ACE.
The two ACs, AC and then AC dash R.
Yep. But not ACF?
Nope, that's a different one. Okay. And then you had GBCD RG perens one. That's also, it was a policy name change.
Can I just?
Three of those.
And just very, sorry.
It might make sense to split the two because the ACs are a name change versus the other one that's a policy label change.
And can I just clarify in the folder where it says, in addition to the AC and the ACR, there's the AC non-discrimination opportunity. There's a second file there.
Yep, so there
Is that, is that also attached in some way to?
So, let's see. So the ACR two is actually our ACR. It's just, New Hampshire School Board's labeling. It's a little bit different. So I will have to come back and see if we actually need to change our labeling to have it be perens two or not. But that is our ACR.
One below the
That's just the example policy from New Hampshire School Board Association?
Just want to clarify.
Yep, that's the example policy. So I, I made note, I think Melanie, you said it, to have the two separate folders in there. I think that's a great idea because then we can put all the example ones in there and then the actual Pembroke policy.
Right.
If you, if you won't, if you don't see an example Pembroke policy moving forward, it just means we don't have one. Yep, that's it. So
We love, you're doing the policies, Carrie and I, just so you know.
This is what policy means.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, I will make a motion to approve policy AC and AC dash R perens two with the appropriate updates.
Second.
Name change updates, or you want to word that. Any other discussion? Jean disseconded. All those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays, abstain? We all said aye. And then I will also make a, make a motion, G, to approve policy GBCD dash RG perens one as label.
Label.
Oh, yes. With the appropriate label change.
Second.
Any discussion? All those approved, say aye.
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 Anybody abstain? Nay? Then what did you guys recommend for the rest of those? Just move them for the second reading?
Yeah, especially with the audit. We should move that one forward. And then, yes, the other two can be moved forward to second read. Is that a motion?
Yes.
Do that?
I will. To move into a second reading? No. Okay. And then
It's the only one we have for us now.
Well, you can, I mean, you can choose to put them to a third reading.
Sure. I just didn't know if anybody looked at it or if anybody had anything. I mean, I have a few scant thoughts on it, but
You can move that one? You can move that one to a third reading or are we, you have a?
I think we might need to move to the first read if possible. I would like to know, yes, I don't know if you have an answer for this, but you know, have our own IT people kind of looked at this and given their, their input?
Yeah, so this policy very closely aligns with the procedure that we already have in place for AI and generative technology. So an IT helped create that policy. So the one we have in place, the New Hampshire School Board Association policy used that same type of language because it was language, there were several districts in the state using last year to create policies because there wasn't anything and we needed something right then. So that language very much mirrors. So I can go back and have IT run through it again, but I know that they did work on the first round that came out. Would you, do you want me to have IT go back and review that and see if they have additional comments or concerns?
I mean, if this is an adjustment, then it would probably be good to get their eyes on.
Yeah, absolutely.
If another reason, then, you know, as I just read through this, the language itself in this field changes so quickly that, you know, it's, it's, it's not never going to be evergreen, but it would be nice for it to be within the neighborhood of what we're currently using. It may well be that, I don't know, but
Yeah, I can do that.
It'd be good to get some, spread eyes on that.
I can get you the feedback ahead of time and send that to you. That way you have it for the next meeting. Am I just, am I sending that to you and Sharon?
Sure.
Is that right? Okay.
Can you include me? Because just understanding it is way out there.
I can't teach it to you.
No, I, maybe some, I don't know, just some input, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Right, I guess I get the gist, but
Yeah.
Let me just put it in.
Yeah, I'll put it in the drive for sure, but I'll, I want to make sure I'll, I'll email you. That way you get it.
And then what did we do with the B E D G? That one?
That's the one that you were saying, Ken, that there are two versions?
Yeah, so we're going to move that to the third.
Third, that one. Okay.
I'll reorganize and restructure.
Do you need me to go back through? So there was a list of policies in April that we ended up not having to meet. And then I met with Ken and Sharon to go over how Carrie and I have been reviewing policies forever. And I remember there was like eight policies that were moved to the next meeting, but when I looked in the May and the June folder, I don't see them. Are they already on their radar? Or do you want me to find them and email them to you? They were like pushed and now I don't see them on the list.
If you, let's do both.
Okay.
Because that way, if I'm looking and don't see something and then you look and find something, we can cross-reference.
Okay.
But I can, I mean, I certainly go through and look at April's minutes, agenda, what was in the board, like I can
In the drive. Okay.
So I can go back and look and see what policies were there and then we can cross-reference.
Okay. Some of those were second and third. I want to make sure we find them because a lot of the work is done and I have the backup if we needed it.
Great.
Okay. Get through the policies. Any other discussion on policies? And you guys are both okay to, no. We're going to do both meetings, do some policies, both meetings now. Okay, good. We'll get there. Number 10, we have public comments. We have no members of the public.
I know.
Does anybody have anything else? Otherwise we have a short non-public. Yeah. Get an update on how, where are we at with the plaque, the military plaque? Do we have an update since the email that you sent to us? Okay.
So just to, I guess everyone's aware, the idea that came to us probably in, I'm going to say late July, was for the class of 1970 to display a plaque in the building that recognized, I believe, 20 or 22 of their classmates who served in the military. We had some conversations internally about what that would look like, what that might become. You know, our concern was if we were to do this for one class, what would the next request be? And how many would we receive? Where would these put? Like logistically, we were concerned. We intended no disrespect or to be off-putting to any former graduates of attendees of Pembroke Academy. But they have since, I think, balled up with you. I've had some conversations both internally and with a member of the class of 1970. And the idea that we put out to them most recently is to consider a board that would be comparable to the Wall of Fame in the cafeteria, the hall of, the Athletic Hall of Fame by the gym and the Performing Arts Hall of Fame by the auditorium. And find a way to recognize attendees, graduates of Pembroke Academy who've served in any one of the military branches and were an attendee or graduate of any class at Pembroke Academy. So, you know, we've had some preliminary conversations with Mr. Bernard, the CAD program, about, you know, what that might look like. Would that be something that he and his students may be interested in taking on? Which is resounding yes. You know, Josh, Rob and I have talked about where this might go. But the biggest next step is thinking about, what does the process look like? You know, how, how would we recognize these attendees, these graduates? Like, what would that criteria be? What would that process be for classes bringing names forward? Would the verification process look like? So that process will be multi-step. But what I've shared with the class of 1970 is the intent would be is that the 22 former attendees at Pembroke Academy that they would like to recognize would be the first group that we would recognize as part of this service, so to speak. We don't have a name for it yet. And, you know, I've gone back and forth with the class, got a couple of ideas. But again, it's, it's going to take some time. I think there's some interest that it happens as soon as Veterans Day. I don't know that we'll have something ready as soon as Veterans Day. But it's an ongoing dialogue with the class. They're having a um, a reunion this coming Friday, which I think they would like to make some form of announcement, so I'm gonna follow up with the class again tomorrow to maybe, you know, button down some, some talking points. But that's, that's the latest.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? No?
I know.
All right, the board does have the need to go into non-public under N H R S A ninety-one hyphen A colon three, uh, Roman numeral two, under small letter C, at seven twenty-two, want a roll call vote, Sharon? Jean? Ken? Carrie? And I'm a yes.